Okay, the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. And I'm showing seven oh one P M. We'll begin this evening by receiving any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda or discussion and/or possible action. Seeing no one from the public here this evening, we will continue. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next on the agenda are action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R two thousand and twenty dash seventeen, all action of the commission shall be made by affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item tonight is consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat for Challenge Elite Sports, a subdivision of nine point five four five acres out of the Perry and Austin League, A dash fifty-five being lot seventy-three of the Hoeldale Kaufman subdivision, as recorded in volume three, page six of the Map of Records of Harris County, Texas, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Aubrey, is this one yours?
Yeah, I'll take this one. So this is just a preliminary plat to create one commercial reserve on Beamer Road. It is between the future Red Ball Oxygen site and the Paintball Zone. It's a ten acre tract and they're looking to develop that with a volleyball facility in the near future, so. And they did have one minor comment to add the industrial regulation matrix to the plat, and that's been taken care of. It wouldn't have been anything we would have held it up before, but it's been corrected.
Okay. Mark, any questions?
No, we've seen this once before.
Um, I don't think this is preliminary plat, so.
You're thinking of red, the oxygen, maybe.
Okay. All right, I have no questions.
Travis.
Yes, great idea.
Okay, Kathy. Mr. Sassen.
So the next door to it is the Paintball Zone. Is that still operational?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I didn't realize that was still going.
It's not exactly next door, right? There's like couples?
Yeah, I think they're, yeah, it is right next door.
On one side and then the Red Balls on the other.
Yeah.
And there's no structures going to be going on to this based on the plat I'm seeing at this point?
This is just the plat. They'll come for site plan approval in the future.
So that's where we'll get into the meat of what they're actually doing.
Yeah, they'll have to do final plat. They'll have to extend the water line, which Red Ball Oxygen is extending the water line to and through to their property line. And then these owners will have to extend it to and through their property, like to their other side of their property line, so that the next owner could, yeah, keep tying in.
Do you remember what size line that was? I was, I was curious about that, and I saw it wasn't on the drawing. And if you don't know, that's fine. We'll find out when they do the, do the rest. Continue on.
It's, I'm thinking maybe an eight inch.
I was thinking, I heard an eight inch in this area a long time ago, but.
It should be an eight inch, yes.
Yeah, okay. And that will furnish all, everyone further on up.
Yeah, I know Red Ball, like, kind of big issue. They wanted to put it like twenty-six feet deep or something crazy like that. So there's been a lot of work to get Red Ball, you know, to where they can install it. So, but it will be a public water line, so we'll have to test it, and the city council will accept it before we record their plat, so.
Understood. I have no other questions.
So, did I hear you correctly that Red Ball's ahead of them, at least has been in their development? They'll put in their section and they'll tie into that section. Okay. Okay, the only other question, just in looking at it, you know, we've got Red Ball going in, and I believe it's an air separation plant, or at least, at least it's a industrial gas supplier. And I'm just curious as to, you know, and I wish the applicant was here, just because I'd like to know how many people they really expect to be on that property. I'm just, I know it's permitted, it's a permitted use, I know that's been looked at, but it's just, I'm concerned about a lot of people out there when, when next to an industrial gas supplier. And, you know, what things are heavier than air, what things can go boom, and that kind of thing. But it's on nine and a half acres, so I get comfortable, and I get comfortable knowing that they're going to come back to us on, in the commercial site plan, and we can kind of see how they laid out. Maybe they're going to be kind of away from that side of it, closer to the Paintball area, so.
Well, excuse me. Those may be better questions for Red Ball, too, because they're going to be coming forward with their site plan.
Right.
So we could ask them, like, what kind of protections they have in place.
What kind of things are they handling? It's just, I'm just concerned about how many people they might be out there right next door. But I, I think it's great development for out there, even, you know, even the Paintball, I drove out that way on Beamer today, there were people out there, so it's bringing those people into Friendswood and supporting those businesses. So I think it's, it's a good, it's a good fit out there, just curious. But you, good point. We'll ask Red Ball. So I have no, no further questions or comments.
Can I ask one other? Just because you've been talking to Red Ball, do you have a sense of what they are doing out there? Or, we will see when they go and come forward, of course, but I'd like to get a sneak preview if, if you know. Are they, are they just selling chemicals?
I think we're kind of getting off of.
Never mind, okay. Well, it, it does impact what we might be doing with this property in terms of the potential risks and, and such, but fair enough. I'll, I'll wait for, till we see that.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a, a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, our next action item is the Gianna Estates. Replat of Lot Nine, Friendswood Gardens subdivision, being Lot Nine, which is point eight five four acres of Friendswood Gardens, a subdivision in Galveston County, Texas, according to the map or plat thereof, recorded in volume two fifty-four dash A, page eighty-three, and transferred to volume six, page eighty, of the Map of Records of Galveston County, Texas, and being part of Abstract One Five One, Sarah McKissick survey, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. We will now open the public hearing to receive comments, both oral and written, regarding this requested replat. Aubrey, this one, yours on the staff summary?
Mm-hmm. So this is just a subdivision of two, one residential lot into two. Excuse me. So the lot originally fronted Garden Drive, and the, it's being subdivided, and both lots will front Shadow Bend Avenue, and will no longer be known as Friendswood Gardens subdivision. It'll be Gianna Estates.
Got it. Okay, and since no one is here from the public, we will now close the public hearing for this topic. The commission will now consider and take possible action regarding the requested replat. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second. Thank you. Okay. Rich, any comments or questions?
I don't have any comments or questions. It's the, it's a reasonable sized lot, cutting it to two reasonable sized lots, it's, it fits with the downtown area. I have, I have no issues with this.
Exactly what he just said.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mark?
Good here.
Yep. Nope, I, I concur. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, our next action item is Propose Amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance Section Seven Point P, Point Six, Permitted Use Table, to amend the zoning districts in which the following N A I C S uses are allowed, sixty-two thirty-two, residential, intellectual, and development, disability, mental health, and substance abuse facilities, six-two three-three-one-one, continuing care retirement communities with onsite nursing, and six-two three-three-one-two, assisted living facilities for the elderly without onsite nursing, and to remove, subnote B, five point S one, site plan approval required, and amendments to Section Twenty, definitions to remove the term personal care facility and add the term assisted living facility. We will now open the public hearing to receive comments, both oral and written, regarding the requesting amendments to Appendix C. Becky, is this your staff summary?
Yes, sir. So this was a subcommittee item. We did bring these recommendations to the full commission in October. This is bringing us into compliance with state legislature. These types of homes are permitted by right, so we're gonna amend our permitted use table to reflect what state law says.
Okay, seeing no one from the public here this evening, we will now close the public hearing on this topic. The commission will now consider and take possible action regarding the requested amendments to Appendix C. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
Kathy, I'll start with you, discussion comments?
This is, Becky said it very well, right? This is bringing us in compliance with the law, so I see no, no arguments here.
Yeah, I agree. It's an accounting change to make sure we don't violate the law, and so we need to just do this.
Makes sense. Travis? Nope.
Awesome reinforcement that the staff is keeping us rule and correct. Awesome job.
Right.
And our legal representatives. Representative.
No, it may, it seems like the exact perfect thing to do to match up. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Our last action item is consideration and possible action ratifying the actions taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the special meeting held Thursday, December second, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second. I, I think it would be helpful, I broke protocol just slightly, in that if I gave a summary, I have the updated summary, and just a very brief overview to get it in the record of what our actions were for two thousand and twenty-one, and then I'll, we'll go through and, and go with comments from that. Because I just, just want to go through it, and I'm going to go through it quickly, but try to be concise in what we came to and what the items were. So starting with the two thousand and twenty-one action plan, the, the final for the year, starting with the comprehensive plan, which we know is ongoing, and we status it that way. The future land use map is, was a great, great work, and we've talked about that several times, but that was completed in this year. The zoning ordinance update to help retain large trees in Friendswood was completed. The general, in a general P and Z topic, review the use of L E D lights surrounding commercial window frames outside of the downtown district. We've deferred that into two thousand and twenty-two as part of our overall sign ordinance review that I will touch on briefly when I go over the two thousand and twenty-two action items. Plan unit developments, updates A, B, and C are in progress, and they'll show up again in two thousand and twenty-two. Our subdivision ordinance update, going over the park dedication requirements, has been deferred to two thousand and twenty-two, and is waiting further progress on the park's master plan for us to address it at P and Z. Garden home, next is the garden home, open space requirements is also in progress, and we're looking for a draft to the commission in February of two thousand and twenty-two. The next is C, under the subdivision ordinance update, single family residential lot minimum widths. We, the action item was evaluate the minimum S F R lot size requirements and develop a recommendation for city council. And discussion in our workshop, our last, our special meeting, we discussed that and we closed it, and we really just decided to close it because it's, and remove it for lack of current need to bring that up and address it. D, continue to match zoning ordinance with Texas legislative actions, is, is this an ongoing activity for planning and zoning? General P and Z topics, changes needed to prepare for Friendswood reaching fifty thousand people. We, we have no action at this time. We're going to park that in two thousand and twenty-two as just kind of a, an ongoing parking lot, so that we don't forget about it, but there's no action to be taken at this time. The next B was training, again, as all, training for P and Z commissioners, as always, it's Continuing in two thousand and twenty-one, develop a format to allow for more open discussion or ideas and workshops with city council. This was discussed in our special meeting, and it, there's just no action to take at this time. We think communication is going well, and we'll continue to think about that as, as needed, but for now it's closed. Continue to strive for consistent application of ordinances and P and Z rulings. Obviously, it's an ongoing thing we always work and strive towards, no action at this time. Evaluate if P and Z can and should push for earlier traffic studies in the development process and for application to smaller developments. We've closed that after discussing it. We thought the best place for that to be addressed was at engineering, and staff is going to be working with engineering to have them take a look at that. Consider whether a supermajority vote by P and Z should require a minimum of a supermajority vote by city council to not allow, not follow, P and Z's recommendations. Some cities do that. We discussed that, looked at it, and just decided there was really, there's no, there's really no support or need at this point to make that change. So that item is closed, is what we agreed in our special meeting. So that wraps up the two thousand and twenty-one items, and what made it into two thousand and twenty-two, I've already mentioned those, some of those briefly, but just to be complete, that we'll continue to work on the comprehensive plan, and we are going to, have, we developed a goal for ourselves, so by the end of February, two thousand and twenty-two, we want to develop a list of the sections that, that need to be addressed in two thousand and twenty-two. Plan unit development, we have topics A, B, and C carried over from twenty-one, and we're continuing to work with, work with, mainly on all the plan unit development changes, some of which will be discussed tonight. Those are in progress. Subdivision ordinance update, mentioned earlier as well, but this carries into two thousand and twenty-two, review the park dedication requirements. Currently, no land dedications required unless the subdivision contains six hundred and fifty-five lots or more, and we'll collaborate with the parks and recreation. We are just, again, as I mentioned earlier, waiting more progress by the parks departments in developing their master plan, when then we will engage with them. Subdivision ordinances continued, the garden home district, consider adding open space requirements or other amenity requirements. It's in progress. We have a draft to the commission as a goal by February, in February of two thousand and twenty-two. General P and Z topics, general review of the sign ordinance, including the use of storefront L E D lights for two thousand and twenty-two. Investigate limiting or eliminating any new above ground power or communication lines that cross streets in the downtown district or community overlay district. That made it to the list to look into in, in two thousand and twenty-two. And then there's a list of open-ended topics that I had mentioned earlier that are kind of parked here for now, just in case some future need, but right now there's no action. The fifty thousand residents, training, and then keeping up with Texas legislative actions to make sure we match up, and then continuing to strive on consistent application of the ordinance, ordinances in P and Z rulings. So that's our two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two action item list review that we went through in our special meeting on the second of December. So with that, we'll move into discussion. Kathy?
So all I'll say is that I felt like, for the time that I was here in twenty-one, that we got a lot accomplished, and I was actually impressed with the, the plan that we have for twenty-two, in that it's really addressing some of the, the key items that came up throughout the year while, while we were having some discussions. And it's, to me, also progress in the continuing effort to really get our documentation in line with all of the updates, including the P U D update, which is coming, and we'll talk about a little bit later.
Mark, your word?
A couple of things from the discussion that we had, so the, the actionees are all city staff, which I can get on board with, but just to say it again, if, if subcommittee chairs are appropriate to take some of this action and take the burden off of some of the city staff, just throwing it out there that I'm happy to do it.
Absolutely will happen, I'm sure. But, no, it's a good, it's a good point.
But, but again, sensitive to their workload, so it's easy for us to ask for something and then load them up, so if it stays with them and there can be that, that, that funnel to make sure it doesn't get overburdening for them, that, that's okay with me, too. And then I would like to make another run, so like the open-ended topics, I think some of those are really O B E or non-actions. I don't think it's a problem that they're on here, so I'm not asking for an amendment to the things or to the action. Like the fifty thousand residents, I, in my opinion, I, I think we can call that closed, and I'll just say it here publicly and then leave it at that, so. I think this captures everything we talked about, so thanks.
Okay, and it's a good point about, and as we start moving forward on some of the two thousand and twenty-two, we, we, we need to put subcommittee heads and that sort of thing on those lists as well. You're right. That's exactly, good point. Okay, Kathy? Oh, sorry, already got you. Rich?
Yeah, nothing much to add. I appreciate you documenting all of this and putting it all down in, in one coherent form. Well done. I guess we should look at this as a living document, so that if we have things come up during the year, kind of like we did with the steeple church on the Baptist Church and things like that, that were unexpected, we should probably put them in so that at the end of the year, we get reminded of, of the things we have accomplished. So we have to all be cognizant of that and try to remember to do that. But, no, I thought you captured the notes well, and I, it was a good meeting.
Yeah, it was. Travis?
I like it, if you can't be ready, if you're not looking forward, so.
Right.
Looking forward and documenting what we've done and looking forward to be ready for the future.
Good. Okay, yeah, I, thanks, so that's good, that's good feedback. It is a living document. We know we'll have new things, and as we discussed in the meeting, we'll try to all do a better job of updating this more quarter, like quarterly or something like that. We were kind of doing it periodically, and sometimes behind the scenes without reissuing it out to everybody, so it's good comments, and we'll do better at that with the goal of doing it quarterly. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Thanks, everybody, for your help. Our next agenda topic is consideration and possible action regarding future Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December twenty-third, and we do not have any agenda items for that meeting, and so we can do a motion and vote to cancel that meeting, and then following that, our next regular meeting would be Thursday, January thirteenth. And I'd like the city council, it is meeting on Monday, the tenth, of January.
Well, I, I'll make the motion to cancel our December twenty-third meeting for lack of topics.
Second.
Oh, second, not third.
Everybody's like.
Okay, we have a motion and many seconds. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. All right. Okay, next on our agenda are two discussion items. My thinking is since we have already discussed the first discussion topic on the regu, on the regulate, the residential regulation matrix, we did that in our last meeting, and we ratified that action this evening, that there's no need to discuss this further. Is that correct?
Concur.
Agree.
I'm good with that.
Okay. I mean, it's been discussed several times. Our next discussion topic is regarding possible amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance Section Seven J, P U D, Plan Unit Development. General purpose and description to add criteria to qualify for a P U D, decrease allowable change in land use from twenty-five percent to five percent, add an expiration of two years, and add standards for revocation. So Becky, is there a summary of that, or?
Yes, sir. So the subcommittee met, and we talked about how we would like to use planned unit developments. What's the purpose? What do we want to, you know, what do we want to get out of them? What's good for the city while trying to help out some of these developments and get a good mix of designs and elements? So the subcommittee is proposing to add a couple of requirements that would help the commission and city council kind of guide their decision, so it's still subjective, but not as subjective. One of them, let's see, so the first one is to specify that if the P U D doesn't call out specific design elements, setbacks, landscaping, things like that, then the underlying zoning district or the previous zoning district, those requirements would come into play. That way, if, for whatever reason, the developer or staff misses a piece, then we don't have a gap. There's, there's something to fill that in. The other thing that the subcommittee just talked about was, I guess the hot, hot topic is using P U Ds for residential lots to get around the lot size requirements, which we're not a fan of. This, hopefully it's easier in your backup material, but this table shows some P U Ds, some single-family zoning, and even a garden home district in there, and the very, very bottom number shows you the density. So our standard density for single-family residential is two point seven units per acre. So looking at these, Avalon P U Ds, two point one four, Friendswood Trails, two point one four, so they're under our standard density. So we want to add a statement in the P U D section that says, if you're going to use a residential P U D, you cannot exceed the maximum density allowed in what the base or previous zoning district would have been. So if developers would like to market and sell smaller lots, because that kind of seems to be the thing, then that's great, they can do that without, you know, impacting our And, so we, this is a condensed version, the, the full wording's in your backup, but we wanted to add some criteria to help make decisions. The land has unique environmental features, or you're trying to redevelop an old piece of property or develop an infill piece of property, where, especially in the downtown district, where you've got a bunch of those little teeny tiny lots and little teeny tiny buildings, when you try and go and redevelop, then we may have to look at it from a different perspective, because the standard zoning regulations aren't going to work. Transitioning between different or and incompatible land uses is, would be a good place for a P U D. You want to try and get a good buffer. Mixed-use development, which would be your commercial and residential within the same piece of property. We want to give consideration to economics, so if it is a, a project that is of such major, you know, employment or economic magnitude that it's, you just cannot pass it up, it is too beneficial for the city, and they need special considerations, then that's something that can be discussed. And then lastly, it provides amenities or features that would be a benefit to the community, so same thing as the economic, but it's more of a physical benefit. And the other proposal is to decrease the allowable change in land use. Right now, developers can alter their land use categories by twenty-five percent, and that does not require it to go back to the commission or council. That can be done in, at an administrative level, so we discussed five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent, you know, what is, what is a good number for them to be able to flex a little bit without having to go through the whole ninety, hundred-and-twenty day process all over again, because that, that is a pretty big deal. And then the last couple items are administrative, adding an expiration. That seemed to be kind of a hot topic as well. of a hot topic as well, these PUDs, they don't start for two, five, eight years, and by then, you know, things have changed, and so it, it's hard to let them use that original plan, so if, if they don't make substantial progress within two years, then they have to come back for reconsideration, and there is an option for the commission to extend that also. I think that's most of it, the subcommittee talked about it, Joe filled in for Kathy on some meetings, and I think we're kind of all on the same page, so our chair, our sub-chair is missing, so whoever wants to jump in.
Well, I, I think you're right, we, we met several times to talk about this, I think Becky did a great job of documenting what we had, the goal today is to update those that haven't been part of it to see where we're at and get feedback on that from, from, from you guys. There's several different aspects to what was changed here, and so we can go through them one by one again if, if you want, or, you know, just, but we're interested in the feedback of the larger group.
I, I had a question, on the density portion of the, of the graph you put up there, there would have been, two of those then would have been over the 2.7, so Autumn Creek and Falcon Ridge, we would have not, we would say no to that, correct?
Right, if the, under this proposal, if those were PUDs, then.
Yeah, that's a good way of going about, I like the density, that's a, that's a good way of going about it, I like that, I just wanted to identify that, of those, most are good to go, but two would have not been good.
Right, and Falcon Ridge is, it, it's a slightly older neighborhood, so what was done then is, you know, not the way we do it now, and then Autumn Creek has two different zoning districts, they have single-family residential and garden home districts, and garden homes are smaller lots, and they do have a higher density, so that 3.22 is a...
Well, that might explain this, but I, I like that idea of the density, that's good.
Right, yeah, this is, this is to show that they can do a PUD and still maintain the density, because we were kind of afraid that was going to be a pushback item.
Right.
So, but yeah, if we want to go through them, kind of subject by subject, so as far as the residential density, do we have any questions, or?
I think it's an elegant solution.
Yeah.
Because if builders, and we've heard it multiple times, you know, claiming or think that the market is pushing towards smaller homes, less to take care of smaller lots, that's fine, but it shouldn't be a reason to go ahead and de, and just build more homes, if they're going to decrease those lot sizes and, and for the smaller homes, then provide other amenities in the area, and West Ranch is a great example of, of that, where they combined all those smaller lots and then built a lot more amenities and walking trails and that sort of thing, so the density came out even under, so I think it's an elegant solution, just my personal opinion.
On density, I'll make one request for you guys to consider before we see this formally, can we, can we dictate how density is calculated, to standardize that, because we've seen developers come in and they can kind of skew how that calculation works, so I know we have definitions, I'm not sure if one definition works.
Are you concerned about counting like underwater, things that are covered by water?
Those, roadways, easements, all those things, just, just something for the subcommittee to consider.
Right, yes, sir, we can do that, in this table, I did calculate it both ways, I calculated it with and without the infrastructure, so taking out the streets and the drainage systems.
Yeah, whatever you guys think would be appropriate.
Yes, yep, we can do that.
Becky, Friendswood Heights, was that a PUD?
Yes, sir.
You remember?
Yes, sir.
And that's not on the table here, I'm guessing they would have busted this pretty bad.
Oh, yes. That, that was a pretty unique lot, it was redevelopment, you know, they had floodway creeping up on their property.
No, I, I do remember, and, and they're pretty dense, it's a, it's probably something that'll come up when city council looks at it, so we may want to add them there and just address it head-on as opposed to sneak it by to your table.
Their previous zoning was multifamily residential median district, though.
That's right.
Yeah, so they would be in line with their, because we made sure, we told them, you had to stay with the same density that was allowed, so they did, they would have complied with the new requirement.
Probably were less with multifamily, yeah, okay.
Yes, that was, that was part of the sale for the PUD was, well, we could just build it the way it is and build a bunch of duplexes on the ground, and so what they presented was definitely better than what was permitted by right.
Thank you for reminding me, I, I had forgotten that it was multifamily.
But it may come up, so it's good that we talked about it, yeah.
Right. So, next topic is the list of requirements, like I said, this is kind of the short version, but the full language was in your backup material, do we have any concerns or want to add anything, take anything out?
The intent was to, where the existing language ordinance is all about, well, the intent of a PUD is this, there were no per se requirements, where we've left those intents in there and modified some of the language, but then now have added that you have to have at least one, you have to meet one of these criteria?
Yes, the language is, a PUD district must meet a minimum of one of the following criteria, and then we also put in there, the Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend and City Council may determine that more than one criteria is needed to approve a PUD, so if they ha, if they meet one of these criteria and say, maybe they meet it very weakly, it doesn't mean that it, PUDs are still subjective, it doesn't mean that you absolutely 100% have to approve it, I mean, PUDs are.
Well, there can be lots of scenarios that we can't even foresee right now.
Right, and the city has the latitude to decide whether or not it is good enough, is, is it good enough for special consideration, so.
And these six items are broad enough that, that, that I think it, it's, we're meeting the intent of leaving it broad, and they could, they have to meet one of these or more than one if they're weak, I think that makes perfect sense.
Right, and that was kind of the, the juggle that we played, because we didn't want to tie it too tightly, because PUDs are supposed to be flexible and made for creative solutions and things like that, but we didn't want to leave it as open as the original ordinance was, where it just says, you know, eh, this is kind of, kind of a thought process, so I think we hit a good middle ground.
It was, it was very subjective, and then it became a complication between how we viewed it, how, what our opinion is at P&amp;Z versus how council looked at it, so this should help, hopefully, help limit that, won't say eliminate, but should improve that. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think it's an improvement as well, I, I think the criteria are certainly an improvement, where I do worry though, and another request for subcommittee consideration, is when I read the purpose and then I read the criteria and I compare those side by side, I worry that we don't have criteria that match or are traced back to the purpose, so for example, number five on the purpose is to protect and enhance the aesthetics and visual qualities of the development, but we don't necessarily have one in the criteria, same thing for number seven, to promote economic development in accordance with the city's plans, we don't really have a one-to-one, and I'm not saying they need to be a one-to-one, but I just worry about a developer coming up and saying, you have a PUD stated with this purpose, but you don't have a criteria for me to meet that threshold, so maybe it's just some massaging of the words, or maybe it's just my interpretation when I read it, but if you guys can take a look at that and to make yourselves feel better about it.
So you don't, if I can ask, you don't think that number five, major employment center or major economic benefit covers the, to promote economic development?
No, number five, yeah, no, you could, yeah, I didn't draw that, but yeah, you could.
But we can maybe make, they can make it clear that it ties, I mean, take a think about it.
Yeah, sure.
Right, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, so yeah, see, she blew a hole in one of them already, so.
Well, no, I mean, we, we just, I remember talking about this particular topic, and I felt like that one was covered under the.
Okay.
Employment and economic benefit.
Um, yeah, I'm good, it's just when, my review that didn't jump out at me, so.
That's a good comment.
I just, that's why, that's why we have these discussions, right?
Let's see, that's really all I have for there, so we're talking about, I did question though, why, why, for number five, since we're talking about that one, why would we make a special consideration for an employment center specifically, or major economic benefit? Why, why did that make the cut, why would that be something that we would permit under a PUD?
I think, because it would promote economic development, I mean, if we just had, you know, like a big, like corporate office or something, and maybe they have a unique design or something that doesn't fit within our ordinances, but it would, you know, draw a lot of business or employment or something, I mean, we wouldn't want to turn it away.
Okay, so that, that's employment for Friendswood citizens or larger community?
I think it was always intended to be economic benefit to Friendswood.
To Friendswood.
Okay.
Live and work, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm thinking, you're coming in, altering the whole fabric and saying, hey, we can bend the rules a little bit for them because of this.
Okay, yeah, really.
Or more importantly, we just aren't handcuffing ourselves, not so much that we're going to benefit, we don't want to prevent, we can't do something that we want to do because we wrote this rule, I think that's kind of what you were getting at, right Aubrey?
Well put.
So when we talk about some big box stores coming in that maybe doesn't fit with the community, I could see an argument for the, that type of development here when it's something that I wouldn't support as a citizen, so.
Big box stores would be a dr, like, I don't.
Under that big box ordinance?
Yeah, we've got that 50,000 or more square feet, where you have to do all the articulations and different things.
All right, I'm good here, that was really just a question to clarify.
Good comment.
And then, let's see, for one, for for J1E, number three. That's the land serves as a transition between the different and seemingly incompatible land uses, wouldn't our future land use map be used to address that, that was one of the things that we looked at, was to make sure that we didn't have incompatible land uses next to each other.
I think the future land use map addresses that on a broad scope, but there's so many uses that are allowed in each individual zoning district, that once you got down to...
So you're talking at a lower level than zoning, you're talking about permitted uses?
Yeah.
Good, fine, okay, I'm good here, thank you for the consideration.
No, it's a good point.
And also, to throw out there, we, we benchmarked some other cities, and we kind of pick and chose from all the different ones, what we liked and what was kind of consistent across the board, so all the cities we looked at, they all had some version of, you use it between, you know, mixed zoning districts, they all had a version of economic benefit, and this is just kind of the final wording on it.
Yep.
So it's, it's pretty industry standard, hopefully.
It all looks good to me, I mean, this is, when we try to poke holes in it and it's hard to do that, that just shows how good of a job you guys do in subcommittee, so.
Right, no, and that is definitely the intent, we, we need you all to think of what we did not think of.
Rather think of them here than after the, not after the fact.
And we're applying it, it's like, ooh, we didn't. So the next one up is the allowable change in land use, currently it's 25%, the subcommittee is proposing 5%, and I know there was some conversations in and out in different groups and boards.
Can you give an example of that, of that particular, of, of what, what kind of change?
One that has changed?
Yeah, or, or make up one that has changed.
Right, so Clear Creek Community Church probably is the biggest and most recent one, their PUD was several tracks, several reserves, some were for drainage, some were for the church, some were for commercial, and throughout construction, they had to add a second detention pond, and so they had to shift some things, and we did do one or two administrative amendments, and we've got, Aubrey created spreadsheet and all the, you know, acreages and percentages, and, oh, she's got it, and we did keep track to make sure they stayed under that 25%, but 25% can be a lot, or it can be a little, depending on the project.
And that development was quite substantial.
I think, yeah, there, so Parcel C, they actually use, so if they, if they adjust, like if they make one bigger, it minuses from another one, and so it's, we had to make a spreadsheet to keep track of it, so the one that they increased by 25% was a 5.15 acre tract, so it increased by 1.29 acres, I think the, the open space tract did, was increased by 18%, which ended up being 11.44 acres, so, I mean, they're within the, we've held them to the fire and tracking it, so that, I, I would say that, that one is the one that we've used it the most, we did, Avalon put 10% in their PUD, as far, they limited themselves to 10% rather than the 25.
Right.
All right, so the three cities that we benchmarked, Webster, Missouri City, and Pearland, I didn't find a percentage of change in any of their ordinances, League City, next door to us, their percentage of change is 15%, so it just, it just depends on the city that you're looking at, so we can definitely pick our own number, what we're comfortable with.
All right, so what happens if it's too restrictive, say 5%, I'm not saying 5% is too restrictive, but just at 5%, if that was too restrictive, what do we limit, what, what happens?
What's the impact?
Yeah, what's the impact?
If it, if their percentage of change is greater, then they'll have to go back to, they'll have to do an official PUD amendment, so it would go through the whole public hearing process all over again, so you're looking at 90 to 120 days, property owner notices, sign on the, on the property, newspaper notice, the, the whole nine yards.
Stop, construct, stop.
Yeah, depending on what the change is, what they're trying to do, it, it could totally stop them in their tracks, something like the church with the detention pond was a, was a necessary evil, it was something that absolutely 100% had to be done, and it was out of their hands, so it could be something like that, or it could be, they decide they want to change their lot sizes or orientation, or you know.
Or flood map changes.
Or flood map changes, yes, it, it could be anything, so like I said, depending on...
In the church agreement, it was the commercial that took the hit, right, that was the one that was dropped while the, the church property stayed the same? Because I know there was a lot of controversy on the original approval of this, and there were some that thought that this might be a way of getting around, the, the agreement was, okay, have at least this much commercial and go on, and then that much commercial was cut back, and so there was a, a thought that maybe there was some bad faith there.
Yeah, so they ended up reducing Parcel F, which was a 25-acre commercial tract, by 18%, which was 6.36 acres to put their detention pond.
Right, so they took it out of the commercial, which was part of the agreement, that was what city council asked for at the time, and, and they, they had reached a compromise number, and then it was dropped by 25%, so that's part of the reason this was brought up, I think, is, is whether that was really, you know, something we want to allow or not, it may be a special case, it doesn't happen very often. And as you said, Becky, we, we, we talked about a lot of different numbers, we didn't do anything below five, we did talk about 10, I think we did talk about 15, and we kind of worked our way down to, to, to five, but there's nothing magic about that number.
What's, what's wrong with 25, what, what problem is out there that we're trying to address, the 25%?
Well, kind of like, like the one I just brought up, that, that says a bad faith of an agreement that a certain amount of land is going to be allocated to a certain use, and then it gets cut by 25%, and, and do you want to allow that as, if it's part of the, the negotiation?
So if the project was, you know, even though the, somebody may have the best of intentions, they sell the development or whatever, change his hands, somebody else could come in and say, oh, well wait, I have 25%, let me re.
Right, there, there was an agreement to do so many acres of commercial, while in fact, we only have to do 75% of that, because we can jury rig and, and not have to go through it.
Yeah, and you're, you're much more inclined to be forced to approve it as a commissioner, even though it smells bad, right?
Well, at that point, you're not approving anything, it's all working within the.
Well, that's true too, yeah.
The agreement, so it, it doesn't even rise back to the approval level, this would rise back to the approval level and allow us to look at it and say, yes, this is done in good faith, I mean, they could have taken the land out of the church property, they chose not to, they chose to take it out of the commercial.
And there's no way, there's no way to dictate, dictate policy here or process for bypassing some of that, and saying 5% without express approval from council or planning and zoning? You have to go through all of this process over again?
That's a good question.
Right, so the, the purpose of the allowable change is so they don't have to go.
Right.
To council. to council. It's to be done at a administrative level.
No, but I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what, what's being suggested is instead of going through the entirety of the process again, when you violate this number, you go through then an abbreviated process for approval of whatever the change is. So instead of having to go through maybe all the public notice, you just come back to the commission and say, here's the new plan, do you concur?
Right.
Right, I don't know how much.
But I don't know if the commission.
I don't, I don't think we could do that because we're recommenda- recommending body on those. We don't actually make the decision, city council does, so.
Okay, so but, so then, but, okay, bring it back to the commission and then to city council, but at least skip some of the public hearing portions. And that's already been completed.
Uh, Mary Kay shaking her head no over there.
We, if it's in effect like a, another change in zoning, we've got to go through the process all over again like we're starting from scratch.
Yeah, but this is, in this case, this is just.
This is an amendment.
It's moving the lines, right? It's not changing the overall PUD, it's just the characteristics of it.
But if you're, if you're, if you're over that percentage or that threshold that we established, you have to notify the interested parties, which is the public, um, that there is a change being made.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, if I can ask, so if we left it at twenty-five percent for, that, that requires public notification, but then had an interim step where if it gets above, could be five, could be ten, could be fifteen, then it needs to be reviewed by the commission, is that not acceptable? Cause you're at least being, doing better than you are today. You're providing almost like an interim step for smaller changes. And anything that's a significant change would have to go back to the public.
Cause the public's already approved worst case in that scenario.
Right, um, we, we could look into that, see if anybody else does it. Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying now, yeah, we, we can, we can look at it.
Right, instead of one or the other, you do both effectively.
Right. Yeah, so you set the limit at if ten percent can be administrative, anything between ten and twenty-five percent.
Is commission and city council approval and then anything above twenty-five percent has to go through the entire process again?
Uh, we, we can research it, sure.
That sounds very reasonable, I just, it would have to be a can we?
Yeah.
Right.
But, okay, and, and no, it's a good idea, so don't, I'm not, don't take, I'm just pushing and pulling on this thing. But if we were to come to somewhere, if, if for some reason, we thought five percent was too prescriptive for the development of tracks, things come up that, you know, that would make them too hard, take too long to go back and redo everything. If we just said, okay, um, ten percent, just throwing out the number. If it was ten percent and everybody could agree that that was a reasonable amount of change, without having to restart the whole process, that would streamline it even more, right? I mean, if we could agree on ten percent and city council said, yeah, we agree with ten percent too, that, that's less complicated than what you're proposing.
Just change it to twenty-five to ten.
Just change it to twenty-five to ten. If, if the five percent is too prescriptive, eh, but, you know, but it ought to, the subcommittee ought to think about it. I mean, all I'm saying is maybe there's a number that everybody can say, oh yeah, that's, that's a reasonable threshold. Other cities have used ten percent, uh, that kind of thing, anyway.
Yeah, what I was trying to do with my, like, I guess, two-step process was trying not to put too much undue burden on the developer, but also, um, address the comment that was made. And I apologize, I don't remember who said it, about them not maybe maintaining good faith in the initial agreement if we have such a large capacity for change at twenty-five.
So it definitely worth thinking about.
One more spitball then would be, could we, um, could we decide, in the ordinance, can you put the range of five to twenty-five? And then we set the PUD wherever we feel comfortable as a, as a commission that's, gets recommended as the ordinance to council?
How much we trust them or something?
Are the circumstances of the PUD, like, if there's something that's very important to us and you're not willing to compromise on twenty-five percent of that portion, then maybe you put it a little bit more restrictive.
So I just had an idea, um, we could add criteria to the PUD submittal that says, you tell us what your allowable change is, and then that's all they get. And because it'll have to be recommended and approved by council, so instead of having a flat rate for all PUDs, each PUD that comes says, okay, if we want to make changes, like Avalon did, they set ten percent for their own PUD. So they can present their number at the time of initial PUD consideration. Because depending on the size and the complexity of the development, you know, it may vary PUD to PUD. So instead of us putting a number in, a flat rate number, maybe we make them establish it with each PUD.
Then arrange.
Just another little complication too is we, we apply that twenty-five percent to different items within the PUD. So it might apply to open space, or it might apply to linear feet of trails, or like, it's not always just land use or the number of lots, or, you know, like one particular item. I think League City had, like, breaks their revisions down into a little more detail, so maybe review their, um, language that they have and see if we could tweak some of it, you know, maybe categorize some of the, um, percentages, like you can tweak land use and lot sizes, or, you know, number of lots by ten percent. But, you know, trails and infrastructure, twenty-five, like. So maybe something, maybe categorize them somehow.
Yeah, League Cities, their language, they have, they have subcategories and basically percentage of change within each land use category, and then they have intangibles such as relocating a thoroughfare, um, things like that. So they've got it kind of broken down as to what is it you're changing. So yeah, subcommittee will, I think we're gonna have to dig into that a little bit more, now that we've got some feedback.
The one follow-up comment I would make is, if we allow them to select, and we tell them, well, up to no greater than twenty-five percent, then you're really calling it out and I suspect everyone would, I mean, my guess is there's no downside to them to selecting any number below twenty-five percent. My, if I can go up twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
My, my, I mean, I don't know, you, you guys work with Taylor Morrison more, but I wonder if they're just not used to ten percent that they see in other, in, in, across the country, and they just as a standard use ten percent. Uh, I wonder, I wonder if, but if you tell, specifically say, up to no more than twenty-five, I know I would look on the other side and go, I'm gonna pick twenty-five every time because there's no downside, I don't think. Is there a downside to, for the number being higher on me as a developer? Should always be to my favor.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Right, I, I, I'm just saying, if we give them a, a range, I suspect it'll always be, um, they're gonna be at the top end of that range.
Yeah, it, like, the number of lots, for, like, if you, Friendswood Trails, for instance, had four hundred and twenty-four lots. A twenty-five percent increase in the number of lots would be like a hundred and twenty, like a hundred lots. Um, that's a lot.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I, which that increases their density signific- significantly, so I don't know that.
Right, and our, we do have, um, criteria on what you can use that on. Cause it can't affect circulation or density, things like that.
No, but these are, I mean, okay.
But yeah, we'll, um, we'll definitely take another run at it.
Yeah, another good point is if, if the PUD is very small, co- contrast, then maybe you allow them a percentage change because it might only be a few square feet.
Uh, right.
Um, and, and so I, I can see the issue, it gets complicated.
I think five percent is definitely a little too restrictive and I've gotten comments from higher ups than me that, uh, I don't think they would be in favor of five percent. So, and even like our parking deviation is five percent, and sometimes that's only one parking space. And so, it, you know, sometimes it's, if you have a lot of parking spaces, it's great and it might help out a lot. But like I said, if it's only, you know, ten parking spaces and a five percent deviation, it's like, eh, we got this.
That's why maybe instead of a flat rate, it's that between zero and twenty-five, hey, give us what you think. And if you come in with twenty-five, then we all say, that's not reasonable.
Yeah.
Let's come up with a better number in the initial process. That way, if it's a huge one, hey, we go unless, if it's tiny, okay, we're gonna give some latitude based off of the PUD.
No, that's, I mean, it ought to be discussed, but in, in, in the subcommittee, I, I think I always get a little concerned about somebody saying, well, we, we're being capricious, that we gotta, if we didn't say we can change it, we need to be able to say why we can change it or what things to consider on those changes. We can't just look like we're just, ah, today it's ten. We have to have some criteria for that established and then that's another level of complication. But just, just be, in thinking of that, that through, think about that.
Good comment.
Okay, um, and then the last changes was a time limit and revocation of the PUD approval. So in our zoning ordinance for specific use permits, we have a two-year limit on it. Um, so we just almost copied and pasted that, so two-year limit on the PUDs seems like, um, a substantial enough amount of time for them to start making, you know, start gaining traction.
Totally agree with that.
Yeah.
Uh, cause the longer these projects go with no movement, it is very, very difficult on staff specifically. A, to remember what happened, you've got, you know, staff turnover and market changes and it's just.
A lot of things can change, that makes sense.
Things can change, so.
Makes sense that there's a sunset.
Uh, yeah, so two-year sunset and then revocation, which is just standard, it was just something we were missing in there.
But they do have the option to apply for an extension for another two years if.
Up to two years, or it has to be a two-year extension?
Up to two years.
So we can agree on one?
Episodes, not more than two additional years.
I'm sorry, right that.
Right.
Some of the other words in there that caused some hesitation is when we start talking about, it'll expire unless there is substantial development or consistent progress. It's really squirmy. I know we probably, yeah, thank you, it's very subjective, I think it's pretty loose. I don't think we would be responsible for deciding if that was substantial, but it just seems like you could drive a truck through a gap in the requirement, something like that.
So we, um, I drafted the original wording, um, Rich proposed a version, Tom proposed a version, Joe proposed a version, I sent it to Mary Kay for tiebreaker and, um, we are comfortable with this, but yes, I, I understand the, the word substantial and progress can seem subjective. Um, but we do use it in this context with construction for, uh, new homes, driveways, things like that. Every day and it's never been an issue, so I think it's okay.
There should be some type of construction or development milestone that's an improved, improvement on the property, but if you can't get there, I, I understand.
Yes, it's too hard to put a milestone in because each project is different. I don't want to put in there, you know, you have to have your, your foundation, or you have to have X amount of inspections, or I just, I, I can't, I don't know a way to quantify it.
If you guys, if you guys beat that horse, no, no need to try to beat it again.
We did very much.
We all were concerned about that, and it, yeah, but no, it's a good point.
Catching up, so.
No, no, it's a good point.
No problem.
What else?
That's all the hot topics, so we have some notes to go back and, um, hopefully bring something in January. Since we're not meeting second of this month.
Anybody else, anything else? Okay. Uh, communications are next, starting with commissioner updates on anything that the commissioner wishes to communicate, including suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or any updates from your liaison assignments. So I will start with, uh, Mr. Perry.
Um, I don't have anything to report, uh, the last meeting that I needed to attend was CEDC, uh, they had their retreat type thing. So, um, I'll get that debrief, I'm assuming next time I meet with them. I will though, raise a question, with Aubrey and I both at that meeting, and maybe this is a decision for you to make. It, I, may, and maybe we talk to CEDC about what expectation there is for having a liaison there.
Good point.
It's, there's not much I can represent that Aubrey couldn't, or, we, we know that's true. So it's just, but maybe, maybe we hold off on that and find out what their, what their charter is going forward and then we can have those conversations. But it was just an observation that I had after sitting out of that meeting for a couple of years now.
I think it may, I, they're reforming themselves and all that right now, but I think it may also be mentioned that they, and I don't, I'm not sure if this is gonna happen or not, but a suggestion was made to maybe have them have liaisons go to other
Okay.
Um, committees, um, so that they can stay informed as well. Um, so I don't know if that might happen in the future or not, but.
That's, well, it's a good point.
You remember things that I don't remember sometimes, and you have a different perspective as a commissioner than I do as staff, so it's not a completely bad thing.
Okay.
Well, I, um, and actually you and I both did, went to the drainage district meeting because our liaison couldn't do, uh, couldn't be there. And I took limited notes, which I note, don't, no longer have with me, and they didn't do anything, I think, that was remarkable in that meeting. It was good, good work, normal drainage district stuff, important that they get it done. But as far as impacting us, I don't remember anything on there that was, was critical.
I appreciate you going, they, they have it down pat, they are, they move quick.
And I, I feel bad that I left those notes.
I can jump in, then I have, I have a few notes. Uh, so they approved the Friendswood Plaza final drainage plan. Uh, regional, regional detention for Fire Station Two, uh, preliminary drainage plan for Fire Station Two. And, uh, an agreement, which was, this is the most interesting one, agreement with Harris County to, uh, de-snag Clear Creek.
Ah, that's right.
So Harris County, uh, has been not as, um, on top of their side of the creek as Galveston County. And so they've reached some kind of commercial agreement where Galveston County will do the work. I think there's some kind of compensation. Uh, and that was, that looked to be a very, a major thing to help them keep Clear Creek clear.
Well, then the, the last thing that I, that I wanted to mention is, um, as we mentioned before the meeting, this is Mary Kay's last meeting with us. And wanted to officially thank Mary Kay for all the help and support, keeping us out of trouble that you've done. And believe me, it took some work from time to time to keep us out of trouble. So thank you so much for all, all, everything you've done for us and and we hope you have a, a great retirement.
Absolutely, thanks. Appreciate the education and patience.
Yes, the fact that none of us have ended up in jail over this last several years is, is to your credit.
Speak for yourself. I didn't mean it that way, but you're right, uh, should have kept my mouth shut. Uh, the, I guess the last thing is, um, we're not meeting, uh, at the end of the month. So I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So with that, um, we now move to, our council liaison would normally be next and she was not able to attend. So next are staff updates, Aubrey?
Um, I will email out the DRC report, I failed to put it in the back-up material. Um, it was pretty minimal, I think, DRC meetings for, it's been pretty slow. Um, and I would just like to echo the same thing, that we really appreciate Mary Kay and we are gonna miss her dearly. I think she's picked us a good replacement, so, um, I think we'll be in good hands, but she will be missed.
Becky?
Same here, we're gonna miss you.
Absolutely. Mary Kay?
Okay, no, I can get mine on the record.
You scoundrels.
No, I was just thinking, I'd, I'd love the public to hear what I said earlier. Uh, first, city staff is excellent, they're very professional. I, Karen Horner is going to be the next city attorney, I've known her for years. Uh, and I've already bragged about all of y'all and about staff and, um, she's gonna, you know, I was talking to her yesterday. She came in and we worked together all day, she's, she's on vacation and she, she's coming in. There are a few things that we do here that she hasn't done, she's got almost thirty years of experience. But she, um, I was telling her that I feel so, um, happy and I don't know what the right word is, I, I'm, I feel so good about leaving now because I feel like the city's in a wonderful place with her as my replacement. And I, I felt responsible to, to do my best for y'all. Uh, I think you're gonna be very happy with, with Karen. And, um, I've al- also told her how wonderful this group is. Y'all, you know, Friendswood is blessed and very fortunate to have people like y'all who dedicate your time and your knowledge and your, your patience. And, I mean, it's not easy to be a public servant and to volunteer and to give all of your time and your resources and your knowledge to the city and it shows. Uh, like I said before, I've worked almost forty years in municipal government. This is the best city I've ever worked for and a big reason is because of people like y'all. And, uh, the, the citizens, I'm sure, truly appreciate. And um the the citizens, I'm sure, truly appreciate y'all. Uh I truly do too and I I wish y'all the best.
Thank you. Well, with that, our December ninth, twenty twenty-one Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody.